I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. For those of you who are at first time in our double wides, welcome. We know it's a little cramped, but we're all going to be looking forward to our new space at the end of next year. Before we start, we have a special presentation. Shawn Toohill is going to be going off the board at the end of this year, so we're going to present him with the traditional plaque and proclamation. So Shawn, let's go over to the...
Okay.
Ed, I'm moving to the podium. Sorry to make you do this. Nobody likes to be center of attention. No, nobody, except me. That is... Okay. Shawn, we're going to miss you. It's been a wonderful six years with you. Not always, always okay, but then, you know, it wouldn't be the real world if it was always okay. So I just wanted to say...
Thank you.
Resolution number 1987 of the Board of Supervisors draws downtownship County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Shawn Toohill for his six years of service on the Board of Supervisors. Whereas Mr. Toohill was elected to serve on the Board in November of 2011, and whereas Mr. Toohill has been a member of the Board since he took the office oath of office on January 3rd, 2012. Whereas during his tenure, Mr. Toohill has been on the Board Supervisor Liaison to the Township's Agricultural Security Area Council, Advisory Council, the Bike and Hike Committee, the Bucks, Central Bucks Senior Task Force, the Environmental Advisory Council, and the Park and Rec Board. And whereas Mr. Toohill participated in a variety of events such as Arbor Day tree planting, work days at the native garden, the annual golf outing, summer concerts, and trail dedications. And whereas Mr. Toohill achieved many accomplishments along with his fellow supervisors during his service to the community as a supervisor. Mr. Toohill initiated the Fund Development Committee, saw the addition of bike hike trails, the installation of play equipment at Kids Castle, the planting of hundreds of trees, and installation of the Century Trail in Central Park. Whereas Mr. Toohill has diligently served the Board of Supervisors and the Township of Doylestown. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Doylestown recognize Shawn Toohill for his six years of service and dedication to the community as a member of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Do we resolve the fifth day of December signed by me and all the rest of the supervisors that you've served with for the last six years? That's for you. And Mercer Tile presented this day, Fifth Day of December, Board of Supervisors to you for your six years of service and dedication to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just briefly. Thank you. Well, thank you to everyone. Thank you, Barbara. It was an honor to serve the people of Doylestown Township, got to know the fantastic staff we have here, administrative side, and a wonderful police department led by Dean. It's been fun sitting next to you, six years. But as I said, and it's probably old, sounds old now, when I ran seven years ago, I guess it would have been, I had five good reasons to run, and I named my children. And now I have more than that. We have six, and Colin, Garrett, Hayden, Luke, Shawn, and Caitlin, and not to forget my wife, Jerlyn. But to show you how time goes by, in the back room, my oldest son was just 12 years old. Colin, stand up for a second. Just not, you don't have to say anything, but he's now, Colin's 6'3", had a lot of accomplishments and grown up so fast, going off to college now.
Getting his eagle.
And getting his eagle, yes. And so a lot of good stuff, and family beckons here. So my best to everybody on the Board. Pleasure working with all of you, and I know you'll be in good hands as well. Jen, welcome to the Board. So, yeah, thank you very much.
I mean, does it appear a public comment? Okay, moving on then, to announcements. The next Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, December 19th. That'll be a 7:00 PM meeting. The Doylestown Township Park and Rec, in partnership with Premier World Discovery, is offering two trips in 2018, The Great Trains and Canyon, and Grand Canyons, and the Treasures of Ireland. Oh, I see, I see, we've got one interest there. Please contact the administrative offices for brochures with highlights and inclusions. Doylestown Township Bicentennial Committee is hosting the gala, launching our bicentennial for 2018, will be 200 years old. Everyone is encouraged to attend, everyone is invited, and you can get your tickets online, right?
At Eventbrite.com.
We're going live. And you can also talk to me, call me, administrative offices, or go to Eventbrite.com for the cost of, for the tickets, they're $75 each. And for those of you who are so inclined, a table of 10 is about $1,000, so please feel free. Doylestown Township Leaf and Yard Recycling, drawfall site is open every third Saturday of the month, 9:00 AM to 11:00, between the months of March and December, and you do that at the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park. Gift giving ideas. Ready? Noting? Watch, write it down. Movie tickets and ski tickets, bicentennial gifts to the gala. You can buy tickets for trees, bricks, Mercer tiles, and clothing. Park and Recreation gift certificates are available. Park benches are available for naming. Mural print is available for purchase, and photos for Kids Castle, a nice Christmas present with your, you know, grandkids or children on the pictures. Minutes approval is the next item on the agenda for the regular meeting on November 21st, 2017. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Have there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
No. Yeah, I was not at the meeting, but there is a correction I'd like to make.
Okay.
On page five, the resolution to prohibit the casinos, you have me as voting. I'm very good at a lot of things, but being two places at once is not one of them, maybe in the near future, so.
Okay. Stand corrected. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Did you vote anywhere else in the, we're not aware?
I'll tell you afterwards.
Okay. Okay. With that one change, will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 21st meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, correspondence, if any.
There is none at this time.
Reports from the solicitor.
We'll have some conversation later in the agenda, but not at the moment.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report.
Director of Operations?
Nope.
Manager?
Yes, the Doylestown Township Planning Commission reviewed the Warrington Township Conference of Plan at their last meeting. Board has a copy of it, and the, we always respond in writing to the municipalities when we review their Conference of Plan amendments. And the Planning Commission would like you to let Warrington Township know that they would like to continue to work with them, especially along the Bristol Road area, for promoting trails. Warrington's extensive in their trail system as well as we are, and they would like us in our letter back to them on their Conference of Plan to encourage that partnership and working with them in trail development.
I suggest that the two liaisons, or our liaison and the chairman of the Planning Commission, the board liaison, the chairman of the Planning Commission, contact the chairman of the Warrington Township Planning Commission, and those two start talking about this. What do you think? Or is it beyond that?
No, I think that's fine. I think we could put that in the, perhaps the cover letter that it was reviewed and we're satisfied with it, but we encourage the partnership in trail development along the Bristol Road area, bike and hike.
Yeah, but I just think a personal contact would be good.
And then encourage...
Yeah, that would be Mr. Colallo and the chairman of the Planning Commission reaching out to Warrington Township cohorts. What do you think? And then we'll put that in the letter. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Everyone okay with it?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea that we communicate and work with Warrington Township on this development. Okay, I don't think that requires a vote. All right, anything else, madam?
I have nothing. No, nothing else this time.
Supervisors, Shawn? You have anything you want to add to your comments?
No, other than I realize I forgot to, I want to put these on, I didn't need glasses when I started here.
Oh.
I'm not gonna, but no.
That's funny.
No, thank you.
Seriously? You didn't need glasses when you started here?
No, I didn't. No. I didn't drink coffee. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't wear glasses. I wasn't as great. I don't know what else. There's plenty, you know, but I did stop coffee. It's been three weeks. I don't know why.
You only had, you only had five children, then. That's another thing that's changed.
Six now, yeah. I should have started with, instead of, I had six reasons plus my wife, I should have started with my wife, and that would have, should have been enough. But, but enough for reason, not, but no.
Of course, of course.
Thank you, no, nothing else.
Ken, you ready?
Just one comment, just wanted to pass on. There was an audit in the finance group, two audits actually, one on grant revenue and expenditures, and the other one on the recycling program grant, and all passed with flying colors. So good job to the staff in making sure we're toeing the line.
Excellent, thank you. Rick, do you think...
Yes, I was diligent on a few other areas. The Planning Commission we just talked about, with the DTMA with Mr. Grasso, we're going to be talking a little bit more in the, in the next segment. But every year, the Bucks County Herald, our weekly county newspaper, publishes a supplement called Lawyers Among Us. Uh-oh. The selection is based on comments provided by readers. These comments are then judged on their merits by a panel composed of Bucks County Herald's staff and members of the legal community. In this supplement, and I have a few extra copies, may want to get them on to grab, you will notice a very familiar face, one that is on the dais in front of you.
One who's hot and is warm in here, or just me?
If you turn to page five, you will see a picture of our solicitor, Jeff Gordon.
Yeah?
So, yes. That was a joke. I mean, it's about Barbara. But if you do look at page five, it's a picture of Jeff. So evidently, that just went right over, and our own super Barbara Lyons was chosen as the champion of champions. No surprise to all of us who have contact with her, but now all of Bucks County will see her accomplishments. Her endless list of accomplishments in here will make you feel motivated to do more and make a difference in your community.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
There's a little story here. The Herald called and said you won this award, so they said, "We're sending a photographer to take your pictures for this publication." So of course I got a new outfit, I got my hair done, got my roots done. I woke up super early, so I didn't look all puffy. And they send a photographer, and they take a bunch of photographs in my office with the, you know, the law books and all that. And then they chose the picture for the front page. This is the wrecking ball of Doylestown Township that they chose to put on the cover instead of one of these cool pictures of me in the, in the new suit, with me wearing a fake hard hat, wheeling a fake sledgehammer, hitting the fake building that is now, you know, going to be torn down soon. Well, it's very soon to be torn down. So I thought that was pretty, pretty cool that Doylestown Township ends up on the front page, and hopefully not many people recognize me instead. But thank you for pointing that out. Anything else, Rick?
No, I'm done.
Ryan?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, thanks. We have a public hearing now. Yes?
No, we don't have a public hearing.
We don't have a public hearing.
We don't have any unfinished business.
We don't have any unfinished...
I believe we have Mr. Benner here to discuss with the Board.
Isn't that unfinished business?
Well, it's unfinished business, so.
All right.
Mr. Benner is here to bring to the Board's attention some revisions they would like to make to the stipulation that resolved the Pavilion at Furlong project located, obviously in Furlong, but at the intersection of 263 and 313. Mr. Benner?
Mr. Gordon, congratulations for being recognized.
No, she was recognized. I may have just brought an ad.
Yeah, a picture worth a thousand words.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Shawn, best of luck.
Thank you.
I agree with you. It is up here.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. There are two matters that I'd like to discuss with the Board and the public concerning the Pavilion at Furlong. The first and more important is the modification to the stipulation in the stipulation plan, and the second item to be discussed is a carryover from the last time that this project came before the public, back in June, back in June of this year, when, I'm sorry, June of last year, time flies, when the Board authorized the approval of the stipulation. There was one carryover item dealing with the architecture of the project. Just a word or two about recent history. Back in June of 2016, Mr. Grasso and his team appeared before the Board and the public to discuss settling a longstanding zoning dispute. And following that discussion, the Board authorized the execution of a stipulation, a fancy word for agreement, and authorized your solicitor to submit the stipulation to the court for the entry of an order. And that occurred about two weeks later. That stipulation, of course, included a sketch plan that broadly described how this property would be developed. Following the approval of the stipulation and the entry of the court order, Mr. Grasso and his team went about designing the project, putting together drawings for the preliminary land development plan, making application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the needed highway occupancy permit, and looking into the development of the onsite water and sewer system. And through that process, Mr. Grasso and his team concluded that providing the project with public water and public sewer was a feasible alternative. And so for the next several months, he and his team met with representatives of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, to see whether the implementation of this idea was feasible. At the end of that process, Mr. Grasso concluded that it was, and that opened a series of meetings with Doylestown Township's professional staff concerning the implementation of the public water and sewer option. Recently, with close coordination with your solicitor, with members of your staff, Mr. Grasso put together a formal submission that included an amendment to the stipulation plan itself and the necessary changes to the agreement or stipulation. And that's what's presently pending before the Board for action. In broad terms, the changes to the project, while important for the traveling public, there's very little difference. None of the buildings have changed location. The project hasn't gotten bigger, it hasn't gotten smaller. What has changed is the introduction of public water and public sewer. What has also changed is that in the, back in June of 2016, the expectation was that one of the buildings would be occupied by a pharmacy. The hope was that it would be a CVS. It's turned out that CVS, and for that matter, none of the other regional pharmacies are interested in locating in a building that is sized as it is. And consequently, the modified stipulation plan changes the labeling of the, of the building from a pharmacy to a retail use, although there's been some interest from tenants. I cannot say that a tenant has been firmly identified. The other changes to the project, and Scott Mill will highlight these in greater detail. The proposal calls for changes to the ingress point, I'm sorry, the egress point to Swamp Road. I want to emphasize that this request is in the alternative. At this point, nobody knows if PennDOT will approve the right turnout, and if PennDOT approves it, Mr. Grasso would like to include that modification to the entranceway. But if PennDOT declines to approve the right turnout along Swamp Road, then the, then the project will revert to the plan that had been discussed back in June of 2016. There's a couple of smaller modifications. I don't want to take up a lot of your time by describing them. So at this point, unless there's any preliminary questions of me, I'd like to introduce Scott Mill, who'll spend five or 10 minutes discussing the proposals to the plan.
Bill, I have a real quick question.
Sure.
The, what used to be the CVS, is that still proposed as a one-unit user?
I can't say that it is or it isn't. I can say that it's proposed for retail, retail commercial. There has been some interest from one retailer, and if that interest matures to a letter of intent, it would be a one-user occupant.
It says, it says on the plan, CVS Pharmacy, says a pharmacy, doesn't it?
Well, that's the, that was the plan, that was...
Any retail use would have to be consistent with your zoning orders.
Right.
Correct.
Would a multiple user in one unit be consistent with our zoning, is my question.
It's, well, zoning is use, so as long as the parking requirements are met and all that sort of thing, that'd make a difference whether it's one or two.
Okay. Because it's scaled as 900, 9,999 square feet, proposed retail on the new rendition. All right. Interesting. Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Just one point I do want to emphasize. I know that there's a lot of members of the public that are here. The written stipulation, the modifications that's presently before the Board for your consideration, in connection with the public and water and sewer option, confirming state, confirming understandings reached with the two municipal authorities, the owner of this property is waiving any claim that it might have for any recapture or reimbursement. So if there were any, if there were a later connection to the, those facilities, there wouldn't be any recapture provisions.
Noted.
That's in the stipulation.
I saw that. I think we all saw that.
Yep.
All right, well, let Mr. Mill make his presentation, and we'll take questions, okay? Because he might answer a lot of your questions.
I agree.
Oh, okay. Recapture is, if you hook up next week, you don't have to pay them back for anything, for their infrastructure that they're going to pay to put the sewer and water in. Do you understand what I'm saying? Normally, you would have to contribute to your hooking up, or your, you know, within 10 years, you would have to contribute to your hooking up. But in this instance, they're waiving any recapture of the costs they're going to put out for the infrastructure improvements. Okay? You're welcome.
Green bushes.
As Mr. Benner noted, the changes, I guess the biggest ones are probably the ones you noticed least on the plan.
Need to talk into your right microphone? Sorry.
Well, is there a mobile?
Do you have a mobile one?
No. Jack, hello?
All right, so, so this plan here, to your right, is the plan that you've seen before back in June of 2016. And to your left is the latest plan with all the revisions, and they're in bubble diagrams, let's do it this way. Bubble diagrams as to what the revisions are. So if we look to the left here, to your right, there was a well proposed in the upper corner of the site, and then we had on lot septic down at the lower end of the site towards Rogers Road. As Mr. Benner mentioned, some discussions and negotiations and working out of getting public water and sewer has been in the works, so we no longer propose a well or on lot septic. We do, however, have now a pump station in the lower end of the corner of the site towards Rogers Road, and that's highlighted in green here. There would then be an access drive that would extend to that one-way access drive that extends off of Rogers Road. So that's the biggest, I think, change between the two plans. Another one that came about from discussions, preliminary discussions with PennDOT, has to do with the right-in, right-out turn movement onto York Road, which is just to the north of the fully, full intersection, full movement intersection at York Road. Their discussion, they did not like the idea of the right out so close to the right in on that part of the access to York Road. So the new plan shows that right turnout movement removed, just the right in. And as Mr. Benner mentioned, up in the building, we've been calling it Building D, was labeled as a proposed CVS, it's now just a generic retail. And in the previous plan and in that layout and design, it was listed or fell into the category of retail. So it's still within the same realm of retail use, and as Mr. Gordon mentioned, it's the same parking requirements and everything else, nothing else changes really other than The next item is along Swamp Road. The previous plan contemplated only a right in, and as Mr. Benner mentioned, this would be something that the applicant would like to do, would be also a right out, and that would be subject to agreement from you to allow us to approach PennDOT to see if they'd be even in agreement with it. As Mr. Benner mentioned, we don't know if PennDOT's going to even agree to that or not. The last item of change would be that we added a little monument sign up along Swamp Road, kind of where, if you will, a pork chop would be if that right-in, right-out configuration were realized. That's something that is permitted by ordinance, and we're meeting all the ordinance requirements for that. We just thought we would add it to the plan now, just so that it's shown at this point in time. But other than that, as Mr. Benner mentioned, you know, the main gist of the site itself, nothing has changed. Buildings haven't changed, the parking, the layout alignment, none of the design features have changed since you last seen it back in June of 2016.
I'm plan-reading impaired, so forgive this question, but how far is that right out on, indicated on Swamp Road from the intersection? And can you tell me, not so much in, more like car lengths or, you know, city blocks in term, instead of by feet?
Sure.
Just trying to get a visual of what that would look like from weaving the intersection...
Is it different than the right in that PennDOT rejected on York Road?
On York Road.
It's the same issue.
Right. Right now, because we didn't change the right-in movement there, it's shown as about 50 feet, which would be three car lengths.
That's really close.
It is, and we acknowledge that PennDOT, if they do allow for it, would probably want this movement shifted back a little bit.
What, to five car lengths?
If at all.
Yeah.
What was the distance on the other right out down to the signal that PennDOT rejected?
It's close, real close.
That's close, real close. That's maybe about five car lengths.
What, do you have any other questions?
Not right now. I'd like to hear the public first.
Okay, we'll take, are you done with your presentation, Mr. Fetter? Do you have any other information to present, Mr. Fetter?
Actually, no. When we're finished with this discussion, let me lift that question back to you. I do have David Plotnik here. We could discuss the architecture to the project or...
Pull the microphones back.
Let's move on these questions first, do you think?
Okay.
I mean, questions on what's been already presented, okay?
No, in terms of, I think Scott did a nice job in describing the proposed changes. The modified stipulation, I've been working closely with Jeff, and the changes to the stipulation do a little more than implement what Scott has just described.
Chief, do you have any comments on the right-out on 313?
I would just be curious why PennDOT's restricting the other one. Probably the same reasons.
Too close to the intersection? Back up.
This could be even worse, because you're going to try and get cars to go across the eastbound lane to try and go south on York Road.
You're coming downhill.
And you're not going to be able to get out.
Yeah. Okay, comments from the public, and you're going to have to take the microphone and identify yourselves, where you live, your name, address. Any comments? Sir? You get to go first.
My name is Mark Fetter. I represent the people that live on Number Five Old Nursery Road over there. Can I approach that diagram for a moment? Take a look.
Keep using the microphone.
Do you have a microphone?
Yeah, please. We're being televised live, so that's why we record, we're recording live, and then we webstream forever, so...
I was just wondering the distance between here, this line, and the blacktop over here.
Can you use the microphone in your question again, please?
I was just wondering what the distance is between the back of the house, property lines, and the proposed blacktop there.
It's 207 feet.
This distance right here is 207 feet?
Yes, from that edge of pavement to the property line. We actually have the dimension on the plan right there. And then it's 200, about 233 feet from the property line to the building corner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fetter. Other questions or comments?
Jim Haggler.
Mr. Binger, we've missed you.
Is this project going to go through land development just like any other project?
Yes.
I saw a lot of trees disappeared and whatever that I thought would have stayed if we went through the land development process first.
Reforestation is part of the, is part of the original stipulation, which carries over into the new one. The only question I have is whether $25,000 is sufficient security for the reforestation, because that's based on eight years ago.
Yeah, probably.
So, but that will deal with in the land development part of it?
Subject to full land development.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Binger. Yes, sir. Mr. Fetter, you have another question?
What's up?
Don't talk until you get there. They'll yell at us.
Mark Fetter from Number Five Old Nursery. The trees that are there now, you mean it's somebody going to be wiped out?
No.
No.
No, they already wiped out some trees they had to put back.
But I'm saying that the land that's between the property lines on Old Nursery and the development that, all those trees are going to stay there?
Yeah, subject to, we'll have to meet with the township's representative from Boucher and James to go out and maybe clear out some vines and undergrowth that is considered non-native invasive species. A lot of that has to come out. But all the trees that are in that area are to be remain, are to remain, as well as we're providing additional buffering trees in that area as part of the tree replenishment and to meet the requirements for land development.
You said 270 feet, is that what you said? 270 feet?
207.
207.
Other questions or comments? Please, sir. Can you make your way through the crowd? Okay?
You can go up there.
Yeah, you can go to this one. Can you identify yourself, please, and your address?
Alan Victor, 116 Rogers Road, and that's what my question's about. I didn't hear what you were saying about the access and egress on Rogers Road. I was wondering if you could go over that.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I didn't hear what you were saying about the entrance and exit on Rogers Road, so I was wondering if you could go over that for me.
Sure, and as Scott goes over it, let me assure you that the modifications to the plan make no changes to the modifications that were, I'm sorry, to the sketch plan that was approved back in July of 2016. So there's no changes proposed to ingress and egress to Rogers Road, but Scott, perhaps you could amplify that, please?
There is a, it's actually an ingress point. It's one-way in only. And as Mr. Fetter mentioned, that has not changed since this plan was previously viewed in June of 2016. It's a 16-foot-wide paved access road that extends from Rogers up to where meets that first intersection point within the site, then it becomes two-way. But there would not be traffic exiting out onto Rogers Road from that point.
And can you turn left and right into there?
Did you hear the question, Mr. Fetter?
The question, can you turn left or right? I'm trying to remember if, I know that had been discussed back and forth. I don't think our client is in favor of one way or the other, whether you limit it one way or the other. At this point, we're just showing it as full movement in, basically.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, sir?
Hi, Steve Sevly, 7 Old Nursery Way. I think the term was pumping station. I'm not really familiar with the operation of a pumping station. How do these operate? How much noise do they generate as, you know, a property that will butt up to this development? I'm curious, you know, how that operates versus a on-site septic.
The proposed pump station is located about 110 feet from Rogers Road and about another 150 feet or so from the adjoining property line. And basically, it will capture the sewage flows of this property. I don't know at this point if there will be other flows added to that at this point, but it'll gravity feed to the pump station, and then from there, it'll pump into a pipe in Rogers Road, meandering all the way up, basically, to, I believe, Cherry Lane, and then it turns right onto Cherry Lane, and then left onto 313, and then into Doylestown Borough. But the pumps and everything mechanical is, I understand, will be underground, and it won't be a noisy operation. We are providing heavy landscape buffer around the pump station to help mitigate the view and whatever sound may emanate from it.
Okay, so it would be like hardscaping, where it would block the sound versus just like trees and shrubs that would visually...
Right now, we're just showing trees and shrubs landscaping.
I don't think that pump stations make, yeah, they don't make noise, yeah. Do you know, Mr. Mill, whether there's, what the capacity is for that pump station? If they've built in some, you know, obviously, other people might want to hook up.
Yeah, I don't know what the situation is with that. We weren't involved. Our office did not work on the design of the pump station or the water line.
All right, we'll get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. ... Oh, go ahead, sure.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Mahoney from 11 Old Nursery Way. My question is about the water and sewer. Will the lines only be coming down Rogers Road, or will there be lines on Old Nursery Way for access, or where does that leave the homeowner? Will there be a requirement in the future that we are, that's mandatory that we hook up?
I guess the question was that the lines themselves and where exactly they'll be going. And based on the plan that was submitted with this application or the revised application, it doesn't show any additional lines extending off other streets. It extends down Rogers Road, goes down, actually kind of meanders, Spring Valley Road makes a left, then Windover Lane, up to Cherry Lane, and that's where it makes the right turn, and then the left turn onto, onto 313. So at this point, there is no additional lines extending into any other roads or cul-de-sacs or service lines being shown at this point in time.
And for those folks along those routes, we don't require anyone to hook up. It's an opportunity if you need to hook up or you want to hook up, but we don't require that unless, if it's a septic situation, you've got a failing system, then the Bucks County Department of Health would make some kind of requirement. Sir, you had a question?
It was just a follow-up part of your...
Do I answer your question? Okay. All right, Mr. Fetter, you got another question?
You know, I counted off, they put up a temporary plastic fence there, and I counted off 100 feet. Now, you mean to tell me they're going to put, it's going to be 107 feet past that temporary fence is where they're going to start the blacktop?
Yes, yeah.
I kind of find that hard to believe.
That's what they said.
They cleared out a pathway and put a temporary fence at 100 feet from my parents' lawn. And for me to come in here, it's 200, how are they going to now go another 107 feet past that?
We're allowing room for necessary grading that has to be done behind the building, behind the paved accessway behind the building. That's all part of what's going to be done for that. There was also, at that point in time when all that clearing was done, it was contemplated to have on-lot septic. So they had to go in and do a lot of testing to try to determine where suitable spots are for septic. And just to kind of build on what I had mentioned before about the trees along your property line, that is the limited disturbance. On the side towards York Road, there are still a lot of trees shown, but those trees will be coming down on that side.
I can't tell, Mr. Grasso, how to, I can only just try to stick up for the quality of life of my folks down on that road there. And 277 feet is, I don't have much else to say. I'm very happy with that.
Okay, great. All right. Another question right here.
Just one question.
To the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Steve Murnum at 52 Rogers. What will be the tap fee if we could tap in?
I don't, we don't have that information right now. That would have to be assessed at the time by the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. So it's all dependent on timing and, yeah.
Guess you guys are not kicking in at all?
They're putting a line in.
They're putting the, they're putting the line in. They're building the infrastructure.
A couple of tap fees? No. In answer to your question about kicking in, under the Municipal Authorities Act, the developer has the absolute right to recover its pro-rata share of the cost of the transmission lines. And Mr. Grasso was nice enough to waive that right to obtain those recapture rights. So to the extent that he has waived those rights, you can consider that as a contribution.
Anything else? All right, you have more to present?
I do not.
Well, just piece of it. The board needs to decide whether you're going to allow the amendment to the stipulation, number one, to provide public water and public sewer, number two, to change the definition of pharmacy to retail, and number three, the right egress onto 313. So I guess maybe we do these one at a time, I suspect.
All right.
And the sign.
And the sign?
The sign's permitted.
The monument sign?
Right, but I thought they were asking for it in the stipulation. If they get the right-out, they need the sign, right?
No, the sign is irrespective of whether the right-out is approved.
You have two signs featured in your proposal.
That's correct.
The tall one and then the monument sign. Which one is the required?
Yes, both of those are permitted.
My question is, why would that be part of the stipulation? Should this be part of land development? Unless there were signs on the original plan that the sketch plan was, that you may have approved.
Is that true? Was there?
Bill, were there signs on the plan?
No, there were no, the sign, the small monument sign on the Swamp Road, right now it's an ingress point. The sketch plan didn't show a monument sign. It does now, and that's by right.
So if it's by right, there's no need to put it in the stipulation?
There's nothing in the stipulation.
Put it in the stipulation, so you're just, it's a matter of information.
That's correct.
All right.
If I misled the board, I apologize. The, no, in terms of the stipulation, the stipulation makes reference to the right-out, and the stipulation, I believe, makes clear that if PennDOT doesn't approve a permit, then the point of ingress will stay the same.
So the board's first decision is whether you're fine with public water and public sewer.
All right, board's consideration. Is there a motion to approve or disapprove?
Oh, I'm in favor of sewer and water. I mean, that's a big step for the community.
Okay. Brian, were you going to say something? No, I was, agreed. Yeah, I second that. Any other conversation about it? All in favor?
Aye. Second has to do with just changing the notation from pharmacy to retail.
I have no, I have no, no opinion. Yeah, no opinion.
So you should, you need to file a motion.
I'll make a motion for to change it from pharmacy to retail.
Second, Fetter.
All in favor?
Aye. And the last issue has to do with the right-out on 313.
I am not in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of that either.
And I have a question, real quick, Mr. Fetter. If you don't get the approval, if you don't get the approval from this board or from, if you had gone to PennDOT for that right turnout, what would be the proposal of the developer, just to keep what had already been?
That's right.
Okay.
The way I understand it, though, you're, you're asking us to approve the right-out in order to go to PennDOT. You may get rejected if you don't.
That's right.
But if we don't at least give you that approval, you can't even go to PennDOT.
That's the way it works.
I think you're creating such a congestion there, and not a safe one.
I agree, and it's on a downhill.
Yeah.
It's not safe. The other thing that somebody mentioned, I forget who it was, because people may want to make the left on 313. They'll have to go across one lane of traffic, get in the left lane, and then turn left to go up towards Buckingham and La Havasca. That's the, that's the dicey issue.
All right, I'll move that we deny the third request. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any other conversation, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Two first, two out of three is not bad.
No, you know, baseball, that's Hall of Fame.
That's it, you win. Yeah. Great, don't tell me.
I assume we're going to get a clean copy to look at before we...
There'll be a clean copy revised with the stipulation, yes.
Yes. I have to go through the stipulation. I'm not sure if there's any verbiage in the stipulation that alludes to that right-out, but the modified plan, of course, will have to be revised to eliminate the arrow.
Okay.
When do we evaluate the reforestation? That'll come as part of land development.
Any other questions? Do you have anything else to say?
Not on this topic.
Okay.
We've got some architecturals.
I mean, I can speak about a lot of other things wholly unrelated, but I doubt that anybody wants to listen.
We know you can speak. Come on, you can come on up.
Excuse me, it's Mark Fetter again. When you change it to pharmacy to retail, I wanted to just say, sorry, but you didn't ask the public for a comment. And when you say that, do you mean 24-hour retail, or do you mean like a nine-to-five retail?
Whatever retail is permitted by the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance.
Do you know what that is, sir?
I don't know there's any restrictions on timing, do you?
There's not, we do not have hours operations restrictions. There are no hours of operation restrictions in our zoning.
Okay.
But that's true for all the other retail.
Is there any way the board can make restrictions on that?
Only with the consent of the applicant.
Consent of who?
The applicant. The guy who's going to move in there.
Because you do have a row of houses behind there.
Mm-hmm.
And 3 o'clock in the morning's not a good time to blow your horn.
Well, there was an opportunity for 24-hour pharmacy as well, so, just saying.
I'm just making my point, that's all.
I got your point.
Thank you.
We're on it. You stick around now. I mean, okay, good. Mr. Binger. Mr. Binger, go ahead. Last comment before we get to architecture.
So I take it as of right now, there is only one out, and that's in the center of the development, right?
the development, right? Since you've talked, you know...
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct, okay. With our zoning, if you have a development with 25 houses or whatever, you need two ins and outs, whatever, what is the zoning for a develop, a shopping center?
I have no idea. Do you have any idea?
Um, not, I'd have to look, yeah, from somewhere.
Well, not only is...
I don't think there's a zoning requirement, maybe a subdivision or land development requirement, but not a zoning requirement.
And it could be a waiver then, because they're not provided.
Okay. So if you don't allow the 1 on 313, the one out, there's only the one in the center, and what I'm getting at is now you're going to propose to go out on the Rogers Road?
No, you can't.
The court order says it only is...
Yeah, I understand that.
We're not going to change it. You can't go out onto Rogers Road from there.
He's saying if we have to change it to two exits, where are they going to go? That's his question.
We're not going to do that.
Okay. As long as you uphold the stipulation that...
Rogers Road is sacred.
It's not, we're not putting traffic on Rogers Road. All right, architecture.
Architecture. David?
David Palatnik with PZS Architects, and the last time I was here, I had a couple of renderings, they were hand renderings, and we have developed the design a little bit more, based on some comments that you had. And so the first rendering I want to show you, that are computer renderings, is the larger building, that's 17,000 square feet. Basically, I'll show you a little bit of the materials. The building has a stone base, sewer front, and there's awnings on each one of the pieces of sewer front. Each one of these different sewer fronts could be an entrance to one of the stores or retail stores, it depends on how it ends up getting broken up. Over these sewer fronts, we have some architectural awnings, and above that, we would have a sign ban. What we did is that we ended up breaking up the facade, the facade's about 180 feet, we ended up breaking it up with the use of dormers, and some peak roofs, and we're using some architectural shingles. And this material in here would be like a party plant siding that you see, and then we would have architectural lights shining down. You could see a sort of a detail, just a sort of blow up a corner in here, so you could see how all the materials come together. We've taken some stone up on the, on one of the piers, and you can see one of the lights and how the siding comes down to the stone where there's a cast stone pad. So there's going to be some nice materials that are being used here, so it should work out very well, it should be a nice, nice project. So again, this rendering here, I'm sorry if I'm not talking into you, but this rendering is this building over right here. The next rendering I have is for this building, I can show you that. Again, same type of design with the stone base and sewer front, with awnings over there, and architectural sort of boostneck lights, that I think that should complement the architecture. Some windows on the side with a little pent roof. Again, we broke up the facade with these dormers, and then a little shed roof in the center with a peak. Again, you could see the detailing on the side with the stone, and stone coming up at the end of the building. And again, we have the sign ban along in here. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
Nope. That's pretty good. You did what we asked you to do, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments? Not bad, huh? Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Benner?
Mr. Benner, lead while you're halfway ahead.
Is everyone okay with the renderings?
I think you've already made the appropriate motion, and taking a lead from your solicitor, who's been featured in the Bucks County Herald.
Page five?
Page five.
Really, on page five?
So I'm going to take Mr. Garten's lead, and bid everybody a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, proposed cleanup for non-zoning ordinance amendments authorized to advertise, see the draft ordinance. Is that the list of everything we have here?
Yeah, that's the, that's the catch-all, park and rec issues and things like that. You're just advertising it for a hearing, you're not approving it.
Yeah, there are a number of cleanups to our ordinances, I can't find them now. So they need to be advertised, is there a motion to advertise the proposed changes, cleanups to the various ordinances listed on that?
Motion to advertise.
Can we, are there questions on some of them?
Yes, I agree. There's a motion to advertise, and there's a second, is there a second?
I just made the motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now we'll discuss. Good, this gives me a chance to find them. Oh, there it is. All right, as soon as you guys are done having your coffee klatch, we'll get back to the... I know you are, I can hear you. All right, it's just a draft, there's no number on it, so you have some questions or comments?
On two of them, we're, I'm assuming, it's just a general question, where they're deleting it in its entirety, I'm assuming that those things were covered somewhere else, and that's why we're taking them out?
Yes, one of them is to comply with the new reg, if you're talking about the park rec rules, one of them is to comply with the new requirements about carrying guns and things in parks.
Yeah, when did we get to be able to do that again?
Well, when the...
Prohibit the carrying of guns.
When the Supreme Court or Commerce Court said they couldn't adopt that regulation, that law.
Right.
Yeah, we have to change it.
That's no longer prohibited from doing that.
Yeah, I know, when did that happen?
Hmm, a year or so ago.
That's great. All right, so no carrying in the parks anymore?
No, 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 you can carry. You can carry in the parks.
Oh, you can carry.
It's the opposite.
That's not what I read.
It says no carry.
Yeah, it's a delete.
It's a delete, it's a...
Yeah, we had it so that you can, it's a delete.
Oh, yeah, I thought maybe they changed it back. I was going to have it do a happy dance. Okay, never mind. Anything else?
Section 6, Chapter 119, on alcohol, we added at the end, unless authorized by the township in conjunction with blah, blah, blah. So does that mean we can allow it?
Yeah, we can authorize out the use of alcohol.
But it has to come through, it has to be you.
We, the board can.
We have to approve it.
Yes, for special, whatever. We haven't done it, but we can.
If someone was leasing the pavilion...
Yes.
So do they come with a request?
Yes.
And the board supervisors ask to approve it?
Yes. Having a party?
I'm trying to think of, how do you decide to approve or not approve? What's the criteria for making that decision?
No, it's a township organized, sponsored, or affiliated event.
It has to be one of ours.
It's us only.
So if you're a private person, you can't get it.
Okay, that answers my question.
So it's only us.
If we want to have a beer garden for a fundraiser for the parks or something, we can do that, but we have to approve it ourselves.
Okay.
We have to prove ourselves to do it.
That answers my question.
But we could always do that, it's just putting it into writing.
I had one other one on, section 26, it says we're deleting subsection 148-33, water from individual residential car washing. They want to delete that from an approved discharge.
Yeah. What's that about?
It's under the stormwater management section, Mario. It probably got picked up as something in the new stormwater ordinances and stuff, so this is something that's been floating out there for...
Can you please reread the section?
Chapter 148, Stormwater Management, Section 148-33, prohibited discharges shall be amended to delete subsection 148-33(c)(12), water from individuals, individual residential car washing and/or...
Does that mean you don't, you're not violating yours to wash your own car?
Yeah.
Yes. Means I'm not violating.
Right, you can wash your car in your own property.
The way it reads now, it's against the law for you to wash your car.
But this is taken out. Like, I can't wash it.
No, right now, the way the ordinance is...
Oh, we're adding it in to allow people to wash their cars.
Right.
Good, thank you. That was it.
Anybody else?
No, you want a motion or...
I made a motion. I just, before we move on, on page five, under 119-18, Radio Controlled Models, subsection B, it says that Director of Parks and Recreation can approve the use of gliders and airplanes if she wants.
How was the recommendation from the staff?
I don't know why that would be. I mean, first of all, we run into FAA violation potentials.
If you go 400 feet, you do, yes.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that we should relinquish our responsibility, well, I know that...
Well, it could be that she wants to run a class, so like on model airplane or something maybe, doing the class where they would do that. Sometimes they have requests from Boy Scouts that want to do the model rocketry and stuff like that. So she can, what it would be, was that they would have to come get a, you know, a request and, I'll say, use the word permit loosely, but to be able to do something like that, she would want to know about it ahead of time, and be able to make sure it's in a controlled situation.
All right, are we okay with that?
Yes.
All right. All right, Dom, there's a motion and a second to advertise, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Blah, 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 blah. DTMA budgets.
Pursuant to an agreement that I now, I guess is over 20 years old, DTMA has an obligation to provide to the township, copy of its budget. You don't approve it, you just acknowledge receipt.
Well, I've seen about 15 of them now. We acknowledge receipt of the DTMA budget. Anybody want to comment on it? No? Okay, moving on. Don't send the Township Municipal Complex Phase 2 bid. Take it away, Mr. Director of Operations.
Just a moment here to set up, and hopefully this works, and...
Ed, can you hear him?
Chief?
Nope.
Mario, can you hit the light switch on the other side? Now hit it again, this side. The switch, that one.
It's coming back to life.
There we go.
Can everyone see past me? I can see.
Okay, well, the computer boots up, and we get this, the screen up. Basically, this is to present the bids for Phase 2 construction for the municipal project. And so basically, on December 1st, which was last Friday, bids were received, and were publicly advertised for five prime contracts for the Phase 2 of the municipal complex. Give you a moment here while I get my PowerPoint up. I want to take a step back a little bit, and just kind of recap what I presented to you back in September, to talk about the project in and of itself, what, how it's broken down, and everything. So Phase 1 construction, as you can see, consists of the police carport, large evidence storage, the fleet maintenance building, and the public works building. The carport is new construction, the fleet maintenance and the public works building is renovations. They are currently in the process of completion. We will be going to the punch list phase next week with the contractors, and moving toward occupancy of those buildings. The next phase after that, which is, requires us to get out of the existing administration police building, is the demolition phase. We've advertised that contract some time ago, and it was awarded. We've given notice to proceed, well, we're not giving notice to proceed, but we're ready to give notice to proceed. Contractor is ready, we've met, we've had a pre-construction meeting, and they are ready to start demolition. As a matter of fact, we might see within a few weeks them mobilizing on site with fencing and the items as such. Phase 2 of the construction is the, what was planned was construction of the administration and police building after the demolition, and the construction of a new park and rec building on this property at the new Greaton Road parking lot adjacent to Fields 4 and Back in September 19th, this year, I presented to you the following information, that Phase 1 construction costs were $2.17 million, those are actuals. The Phase 2 is estimated at $11.1 million. Again, Phase 2 is the admin building, police building, site work, park and rec building, and site work, utilities, and that was provided by JD Bravo Company, our construction management firm. They did a very detailed estimate. I also showed you soft costs at 2 points, around $2 million, estimated and actuals, as you see there, for the following items, the architectural, inspection, testing fees, the trailers, which we're in right now, the cost of those trailers plus rental, hazardous material abatement, fuel tank, other equipment purchases, and the demolition of the building, totaling the 15.3. 2.1, 2.2, 11 million, 2 million, totaling 15.3. We had a project budget of $12 million, which was going to be bond revenue, and as you can see on bottom, showed that it was, at that time, $3 million over budget, projected estimate. So this information I took and basically compiled into this table, so it's the same information, just broken out a little bit differently, because now I'm going to lay next to it the new cost as of today, okay? So all that information is presented to you, there might be a little slight rounding error on the overall project, that's 3.31 versus 3.357, okay? But what I want to do is, before I get to that, when I presented this information to the board in September, I basically laid a plan out that basically said, the building committee, plus our architect, plus JD Bravo, our construction management firm, said we were going to proceed as planned, which was finish Phase 1 construction, which we were under construction, do the demo, bid that out, and then also go to bid for Phase 2, which was the admin building and the park and rec building, okay? Even though we knew we were over budget, we were going to proceed, because while it was an estimate from everybody, from architects and Rob, we didn't know what the market was going to give us, okay? So we outlined out, and that's what we did. So basically, I'm going to let you know, we did what we said we were going to do, so let's, let's look at, again, this table, information here. We put it out to bid. We opened the bids last Friday, the 1st of December, and these are the low bidders. The top is the cost for the admin police building, and then the bottom is for the park and rec building, okay? The way Pennsylvania is structured with their procurement laws, we have to go to a multi-prime contract procurement, so you'll see the five contracts that we have to go through, which is the general construction, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and the fire protection. We have to do it that way, okay? So we put out, everything out to bid, and we open up five contracts. There's not 10 contracts here, what's inclusive is that, that the Penn builders and everybody submitted bids for both the admin building and the park and rec, because of the way the contract was structured, okay? So taking this previous chart right here, and now laying out what we received as far as the bids, and updating our estimated costs and our actual costs, I've laid in what this information in this column, okay? So I showed you back on the 19th, we were at 2.7, our demo cost, cost us 142,000 plus some abatement, again, soft costs. This was our estimate from JD Bravo. There was our total, the 12 million, and again, the three, the difference, okay? So we opened the bids, and we've updated it. Our actual costs here are for Phase 1 are actually increased. We've had change orders, that number is less than 1% in changes, I just wanted to, you know, point that out. I know we have them, but we're less than 1%. That cost for the demolition has not changed, our soft costs have not changed, okay? But this is what we've got. So you can see an estimated versus an actual bid price. So you can see an estimated versus an actual bid pricing, which I showed you on the previous slide. For the police, building and the site combined, okay? And the park, rec building and site work, combined estimate, actual. Through this process, between the two, the months here, we've determined and learned that we had additional costs for sewer EDUs, and also, we need to have some contingency for PICO to provide power to the park and rec building, which doesn't get bid out, but there will be a cost to us. Right now, that site has power, but it's not enough power to power a building, it only has enough power to power parking lot lights. Okay? So based on a recommendation from JD Bravo and our architect, they said, take the, we knew the sewer, sewer costs were going to be about $50,000, and add in another 150, and hold that in contingency. That gives us the 14.361. Now, with the 12 million, we're now at a deficit of 2.3, where we were at 3.3. So the market gave us $1 million, but we still don't have enough money to move forward.
And how many bidders did you have? It's really that bidding process that drove...
Yeah, the bidding process, thanks, Ken. The bidding process, we had, so I'll go back to this, because it's, okay. For the general construction, we had 10 bidders. For the mechanical, we had nine. For the electrical, we had eight. For plumbing, five, and fire protection, we had three. Okay? So that was, it was a good, it was, it was, had a lot of attention and a lot of people wanted the job. Okay? That's where we're at. So I'm going to take the next slide, I'm going to take this information and move it forward. So over here now, okay, what I just showed you, this is our current situation with all those costs, our estimate, where we're at with the deficit. This is, now I want to jump to this side, and basically, we're moving all these costs over, and what we're doing here is, based on where we're at with the available funding, and estimates of the actual costs plus the estimated costs, we are recommending to move forward with the administration and police building and the site work, and at this point in time, we are not going to go forward with the park and rec building as it is currently put out the bid and planned on New Britain Road, which includes the site improvements and the building and the utilities and everything out there. Okay? So what happens? What happens there? We basically take all that cost, and we, we are now at $11 million. Our budget was set at 12. We now have net almost $1 million. Okay? We do have to hold some money in contingency for Phase 1 construction, around 5%. That's another recommendation from our architect and our construction manager. So we're looking at, if we have to, it doesn't mean we have to, we're going to spend 5% of the construction costs. You just hold in contingency in case you have change orders, which we know, it's just, that's a fact of life, unfortunately. So with that, there's potentially 500,000, almost 600,000 left to program a park and rec building, take a step back, and rethink that process.
The other, the other part of this is that because of the expense associated with the park and rec building out in on New Britain Road where it was identified, a lot of people, you know, we believe that we're putting a lot of money into the ground and not enough money into the functional use of the building. So what this does is gives the township and the park and rec committee the opportunity to review their strategy. And they're saying, well, it was nice that we would build that building out back there, but our preference would have been to build something different. Because we said in way back when, back in 16, 2016, whatever the date was, when the requirements were put together, they wanted both. And we said, you can't get both, you pick one. So they picked a smaller one. Well, now, we know we can't do the first one back there, so now they're going to re-evaluate their alternatives and say, how do we move forward from this point, from this point on? So we get down to, as David's shown you, within the 12 million bond, which we agreed to, but it also allows the park and rec committee to evaluate exactly what they want to do.
Ken, what does that mean? I mean, I, I like this. I like that we're, you know, staying within budget, but what does that mean? They're going back and reviewing it, and then are they going to come back next year and say, well, this is what we want, and then there's a whole nother budget for that?
Hopefully sooner than that. Yes, we are going to build a park and rec facility. I think that's one of the greatest things that we provide for our residents. What they're going to do, and we met with them last night, Ken and I, with the park board, is come up with a plan, just going to build a multipurpose facility, more like a, they call them a butler building, I call it a quonset hut, that looks nice, where you can have, you know, sports leagues playing inside, so you've got a lot of rental opportunity for this facility that'll probably be used quite extensively, not only for township residents, but for the, the community organizations that provide sports, and sports leagues for kids, and elder adults. So it'd be a multipurpose facility that would be used to, you know, for rent and generate income. And a preliminary plan looks like it could pay for itself within 10 to 20 years. And it would be, it would be a building not, I mean, part of the problem that drove the cost of this building, at three, over $3 million, was 100, a million and a half in site work down on New Britain Road. And a nice building that was, was more of a, was not as, not as oriented to a multipurpose facility, more oriented to a meeting facility. So going into a multipurpose facility where you can have kids leagues and older persons leagues, go from, you know, basketball to pickleball to badminton to volleyball, that would be a great use for it. And it'll be a larger facility, and it'll probably be located, relocated to perhaps where we're sitting right now, right where we are right now. So...
The other key piece that they know they need to bring forward too, is a business plan, and to identify what they expect as far as expenses and revenue generated, so we know there's a good business case for moving forward with that project.
Okay.
Well, as you know, we just got this now. And...
But I just want to backtrack a little bit. We, I, agreed to borrow 12 million for the new building and the bridge.
Right.
So this proposed budget is not, that's not accurate. It wasn't the 12 million for the building. I think it was 10, 10 and a half, something like that.
10 for the building and 1 and 1/2 for the bridge, I think, something, or something like that.
It wasn't the 12. So you need to reflect in there what we agreed at the bond issue that we approved, not taking the whole lot. And second, it's good that Park and Rec is looking at alternatives, and that's great, but, I mean, that, that was in my initial bond agreement. So you're going to be, just by delaying or moving off-site or something, I think it's great to look at that, but that means that this building without the Park and Rec is still way over budget. There are my two comments. Again, I haven't, I just got it.
It's over the estimate. It's over the estimate.
Well, over, over the estimate, right, but over the bond that we approved to cover the cost of all of this.
Just, just, you know, I hate, I gotta reiterate what I said back then. I mean, we, we knew it was going to cost more. I said it was going to cost more, we knew it was going to cost more. It was, I think, pie in the sky to think that it was going to stay within $12 million, including the bridge. And there was going to be the opportunity to do a Part 2 on the bond application. Let's not forget that that's built into this. Yes, it's coming out more than it expected, but the, the needs and the, and the costs are, I mean, the needs are driven by the, I mean, the costs are driven by the needs for, for this facility. I mean, we're not spending money frivolously here. We, you know, Ken, Ken and I, we've worked really, in the team here, worked really hard on developing a plan that is as cost efficient and as operational efficient as possible. I know you believe that.
I'm not discounting that.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that.
But, but built into the original bond was a Part 2 of the bond. Unless, did I miss something there? I mean, there was going to be an opportunity to go back and say, you know, if this isn't going to cover the cost of this building, we, we knew we were going to have to go back and do, do, do more than the 10 million, or whatever it was to begin with. So I'm not, I'm not shocked by this. In fact, to me, it was to be expected.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out, we didn't, we didn't have the bridge, we didn't message that the bridge was in the, in the September presentation as well, at that time. It wasn't...
Rick is right, it was in the...
It was in the original plan. I understand that. I'm just saying, as, as we moved forward and we knew we were going to be in the hole, we started to try to rethink how the project could be funded and, and what we had to do to reshuffle the deck.
But, but you can't reshuffle. You know, if, if, if the original was 10 and 1/2 million, and now you're saying, you know, the bridge is delayed, and, and that's all great, but you can't usurp that money. You should still be showing the 10 and 1/2 million. Show me you're going to be 3 million over, and that's a discussion, but this is a little misleading by saying you were going to take the whole 12 for the building, because that's not what we agreed.
Well, I don't, I don't think anyone's saying that. I mean, certainly with you on the board, no one could say that, because you've got to, you're going to point that out. No one's saying that. We're just saying that this is how much it costs, and this is...
Well, he's saying project budget, 12 million. 12 million, I think that's what he said.
Understood.
Okay.
But, yeah, it kind of, it kind of grew that way, that it became the, the budget became that, that number, as the, as the project grew. Whereas the, as we got closer to being done with a final plan. So yes, you are right, but it was also anticipated, at least some of this anticipated, that it was going to be costing more than this, than the, than the 10 million or 12 million dollars. So that's where we are. But what I want, what I want to make plain here is that there's going to be a rec center. There's going to have to be, because that's a substantial part of the, of what we, what we provide in this town.
But the last time we, we talked about this, we talked about cost-saving measures, and that was like facades to the outside of the building, like, has that all been done?
Yes, there were a number of...
So how much were we able to bring down the cost?
We've been, a number of, I'm sorry, I want to talk over you.
No, I'm just wondering how much were we able to bring down, because I'd love to see where we were, what cuts we made, and then where we are now relative to that. Because there were some big numbers there.
Through the bidding process, right. Working with Rob and with Jim, our architect, we looked, they really tried to structure the bid in such that we could look at costings, you know, one of the things was stone veneer, going with real stone versus a manufactured stone, looking at a thinner cut stone, okay? Things like that was, there were three alternatives on the veneer stone itself. Okay? One of the others was looking at, you know, some flooring in the chief's locker room, backing out costs for a security fence that would not be done through the bid process, but would actually be done with us, so we wouldn't have to pay prevailing wage, looking at additional gates in the back of the, of the public works yard and other items. Fortunately, backing those items out, we probably only saved about $250,000, and that may be...
I, I recall the last time we talked, there was talk about not having stone on anything but the front of the building, and that in itself would save us about $200,000.
We received, when we looked at the alternate bidding, going from a veneer stone to, to a real stone to a thinner veneer, we only pick up about $50,000. That's just in the stone itself. That's not necessarily the, the entire building, and, and Jim, if you want to, if you have any comment on that, you can speak to it.
You got to go to the, you got to go to the mic. While, while he's moving, every, every time we looked at something like this, we also had to consider what it, what it means for the life of the, of the facade, what it means for the appearance of the facade, and, you know, you might save a penny here today, but you're going to end up spending it down the road in five years, 10 years, on, on a lesser product. So you have to look at what is the better product for the duration of the building. We're trying to build a building that's going to last for 50, 60 years here. I'm sorry, Jim.
That's quite all right. Jim Linsky from Phillips and Donovan Architects. I, I just wanted to add in, we, we did reduce a significant amount of the stone veneer from around the perimeter of the building, maintaining what would be on the public faces and facing the parks. The other thing, I think it's worth pointing out as well, the budget that we had had from back in July, I believe it was, from JD Bravo, there was about a million dollars worth of savings from the budget that was produced at that time, and as to what was received actually, and through the bidding process. So there was a little bit of cutting and nipping and tucking involved with that.
And, and I'm not sure, Jim, what your involvement was, so I apologize, but you see our perspective when we started, whoever came up with that estimate, I know, you know, I don't know if that was your, or you or whatever, but that's what, that's what I told the residents, I'm, I'll put my name, I'll sign for 12 million for the estimated building and for the bridge, and until I'm convinced differently, and again, I just got this today, and I, I understand there's a lot more to this, and I've got to do some more homework, and we got a lot more questions, but you see our perspective, and I hope you see where I'm sitting, that...
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, how could the estimate be off that much? Any gut feel?
I'm, I'm sorry, off?
Well, I, when we, when we, when we approved that bond, the bond was, we said it was going to be $10 million to cover the new building, the park and rec building, 1 million, 1 and 1/2 million. I mean, I don't remember conversations about a second bond. I don't remember that. I mean, I'm not saying maybe we had discussions about that.
Yeah, and in the fall of...
We always said two.
We always said there would be two tranches.
But, but the budget was for this price to cover these buildings. And, and we are off, we're 12, okay, 12. But we're off, if we're, if we're off by $3 million, where did that discrepancy come from? I mean, that can't just be an estimate versus a bid, it's $3 million off, then...
A million and a half came from the site work on the park building. Yeah, right from the get-go, that's where a million and a half was. Nobody anticipated that kind of cost to have a building built down by New Britain Road.
And we didn't have that information until August, July, August of this year.
But that's a problem, that we spent a million and a half dollars on a site thing, and now we're not even putting the park building there.
We haven't spent that. We haven't spent it. The estimate, the estimate.
Okay.
Well, actually, it wasn't even in the estimate, because the estimate we got did not even have that in there, which is...
The original, the original...
The original estimate from the architect, the estimate from JD Bravo had that in there, which...
I'm sorry, the original one from...
The architect.
Yes. Who's the architect?
Phillips and Donovan.
That's what I thought. So your original estimate grew, and now it's still over budget, so you understand where we're coming from. Why? How could we be off by that much? How could we not have site work down to the...
In all fairness, it did state that it did not include the site work at that site, because it was a great unknown as to where the utilities were even going to come from.
What you could estimate, I mean, 1 and 1/2 million, you know, I don't want to beat this to death.
They're the architect, not the engineers. They have to wait on the engineer.
It was his, it was his purview to come up with the estimate.
No, it wasn't. He said it did not include site work. His purview is the building.
Well, then his job would have been to go out and get an estimate from engineers.
Can we talk about how you want to move forward versus...
That's what I'm getting, that's what I'm saying, I'm getting...
Okay.
What are you looking for tonight? I think there's a lot more work to do. Are you looking for anything action tonight?
What we were looking for was to approve the five contracting awards. That's what we wanted to do.
We have to move forward on this, otherwise we're going to be building...
I mean, I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to be able to approve that, like, I've just seen this, so it's hard to like digest this and...
Can we table this? You know, we're talking two weeks. Let's table it to the next, I, I make a motion if we table this, we do some more homework.
You have 60 days. You have 60 days to award a bid or reject it, so legally, you can table, but I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, that's a, that's a board decision.
Do you want, do you want to speak to this, Sean?
No, I was just reminding you, I'm not...
I'm just asking these guys a question. The impact of a two-week decision, is, what is the impact to it? Is there anything significant?
I don't think it'll have an impact on your bidders.
Okay.
And I'll restate my motion if we table this, we get to do our homework, like I said, we just got this as we sat down, and that's just not, so anyway, I make that motion.
All right, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What? Yes, no?
No.
No? I vote no.
What about Sean?
No.
Motion fails. We're going to consider the question. Okay, new motion.
I, I, we're talking about two weeks. Talking about two weeks to do our due diligence. We all just got this now. You know none of us have had a chance to look at this. None of us. And, I mean, how could you vote on this? I don't, I don't see how you can vote on this tonight, and I don't see what the point is, not waiting two weeks to dig into it, why not? Give me a... Give me a reason why not.
Let's table it. Do it.
Go to change. All right.
Make another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table it for the next board supervisor meeting in two weeks.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
4-1.
4-1. Okay. Guys, you're going to come back next, on the 21st.
Do we want to review the recommendation? Why don't you wait till the next meeting?
Okay.
Will this have to, what I would ask, Dave, if you could reach out to the other supervisors if they have any questions, and make sure we give them enough information within that two-week timeframe.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. All right. Hold on to these, hold on to this stuff. In the stuff that Dave sent over the weekend. Oh, yeah, and you also got some stuff over the weekend?
Yeah. We got some stuff Monday, and we got some stuff Tuesday.
Which is the detail for, yeah. They opened up the biz on Friday.
I know, and I think, I think, and I talked to Ken about this. I think we should have not tried to rush this. We opened it up on Friday, and that just put too much pressure on everybody. Let's move on.
Well... I agree. Let's move on. What else? Girl Scout proclamation. Kevin Navarro and Girl Scout Gold Award for Carolyn Charomansky. All right. You have a third one for Colin Toohill as well. Oh, yeah, that's right. It's to do with my agenda. Motion to approve Kevin Navarro. Are you, is he here? No, they're never here. They're all... Well, sometimes they are. Or is there a motion to approve Kevin Navarro's...
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Kevin. I think his, his court of honor is at the tempo, same as the other one. You going to be there for that one? Thank you. All right. And Carolyn, Girl Scout Gold Award. Now, we did not get any information on any ceremony, but let's, let's approve and congratulate her on her Girl Scout Gold Award. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, finally, would you care to do your son's?
Frankly, I'd like to make the motion to, to nice Colin Toohill for Eagle Scout.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Do, can you tell us about his project and when his court of honor is?
His court of honor is January 14th. His Eagle Scout project was a restoration and refurbishing and renovations of our Lady Achester Hova. There's a three, about a three-acre, it kind of mushroomed, and grew, there was a three-acre rosary walk and stations, and it was multiple weekend projects, removing invasives, damaged old trees, renovating walkways, retaining walls, and then planting with native species and plants. And it was a great project. He got a lot of great help, too, that was involved. Yep.
Congratulations. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Um, and before I make announcements, the board's going to adjourn to executive session, and then, we're going to consider some personnel matters and some appointments, or applications for appointments to the boards and commissions, and then, we're going to come back here after we're done the executive session. So, I'm going to hold off on the additional announcements until we come back. All right. So, for now, we're, we're adjourned to executive session.
Temporarily adjourned.
Temporarily adjourned to executive session.
Recession.
Where are we going? I should say. We are recessing, temporarily adjourned, going out of this room. How long will that take, you think? Half hour?
10 interviews?
10 interviews. Maybe longer. Maybe an hour.
Yeah.
11, 11, or, well, 10, because one's not coming. Convened after holding an executive session to discuss a personnel matter, and also to consider various applicants for openings on our various boards and commissions. The, the first applicant that came about, or for the first opening is, this is, I guess, is in Alphabet Water, the Bike and Height Committee. There was one opening, and we had an applicant named Larry Gage, who seems stellar. Is there an, is there any consideration of Mr. Gage for this position?
Make a motion to appoint Larry Gage.
Second.
Any questions? Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next opportunity for an applicant was to position at the Dog Park, Mr. Warren Grant. Is there any consideration for anyone else for this position? I'll make the motion that Mr. Warren Grant be appointed to the Dog Park as liaison to the Dog Park. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Oh, you're the second. I'm the first. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I never usually make them. That's why I use myself. And now, for the Environmental Advisory Council, there was one position open, and Heidi Shiver came in and, and applied. Is there anyone else besides Heidi Shiver, who is an excellent applicant?
No.
No?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Park and Rec Board, there's one position open, and we had one applicant. Joe Delacat expressed an interest. We know Mr. Delacat. The applicant, other applicant who interviewed is Janice Solkov. Is there any consideration for the two applicants?
I'd like to make the motion for Janice Solkov to fill the slot.
Okay.
Second then.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor of Janice Solkov?
Aye.
Aye. For the Planning Commission, there was, there's one opening, and Jeremy Depler made the application for that position. Is there anyone else that anyone knows of for that position? Is there a motion to appoint Jeremy Depler?
I'd like to motion to appoint Jeremy Depler.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There was one position open on the Public Water and Sewer Board. Several applicants applied for a position on the Ways and Means.